Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order, to order the November 18th, 2025 City Council meeting to our, please rise to the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so small.
And now we'll take a moment of silence for those who protect us home and abroad. Thank you. For tonight's meeting, if everybody can mute their cellphone, it would, it would be appreciated. I also like to welcome our school liaison Sandra Perret for being here this evening. This evening, we have nobody on Zoom for city councilors. Clerk, can you call a roll? Here.
Roy.
Here.
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 Goff.
Here.
Valkir.
Here.
Crapitz.
Here.
Dumsky.
Here.
Kushein.
Here.
Labree.
Here.
Pinia Costello.
Here.
Eleven present.
Thank you. Again, there's no city council participating this evening on Zoom. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chicopee is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts this meeting. Is there anyone in the audience video or auto taping this meeting? Is there anyone on Zoom video or auto taping this meeting? Seeing none, we'll move into the mayor's orders, briefing, and announcements. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thanks. Thank you, President Laflamme. Esteemed city councilors, I have numerous mayor's orders for your consideration. We'll start with mayor's order one, order that the city council accept the fiscal year 2026 Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG grant, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Chicopee Police Department in the amount of $18,238. Said grant will be used to purchase 45T MOS training pistols and, I'm sorry, Glock 45T MOS training pistols and weapon-mounted lights. The grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. I know that Lieutenant Kucher and Sergeant Conroy are here to answer any of your questions. We're excited to receive the grant. This will help just to complement our training program. Anything you guys want to add up at the mic?
Counsel Balak here.
Counsel Balak. Thank you. I'm curious, how many guns are we buying? And am I assuming, if I can use that word, that we had some type of trade?
They're actually training pistols. They aren't, actually, they don't shoot real live rounds, I believe. They shoot almost simulated paintball type of ammunition?
Yeah, so there's 24 training pistols, and they, they're capable of accepting blank rounds, just sound-producing rounds, and also simunition rounds, which are basically little paintball rounds, so they don't fire any live ammunition. So for a training environment, it's a safer environment for us.
All right. Thank you. As a follow-up, did we have any others that were like traded in perhaps, a trade-in value? Or is this a straight?
We have current training pistols. They're not capable of having the optics that we have upgraded to recently. So that's the purchase of the new optic. Do you know if we've traded in any, or if that's a possibility? We're going to be in the future.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you for clearing that up. Thanks.
Any other questions? Counsel Roy.
Yeah, one question. The weapon-mounted lights, you're saying we don't have them on the regular guns that the officers have right now?
We do have lights and optics on our current firearms. This is just specifically for our training firearms, so we can match our actual firearms in training.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to mayor's order.
So mayor's orders one and two go together. One is accepting the grant, and two is the appropriating of the funds. So it's the appropriation of $12,979.87 to the filing-named account, police expense account for weaponry equipment from the available funds in the stabilization. The difference between items one and two is because there's some money in the account now. So this, we don't have to appropriate the whole amount of the grant.
Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move into mayor's order three.
Thank you, Sergeant. And thank you for your consideration for mayor's orders one and two. Mayor's order three is the appropriation of $17,557.58 to the following-named account, human resources special account for indemnification of police and fire from the available funds in the stabilization fund. As you are all aware, we are self-insured, and these are for the IOD and our public safety and taking care of those medical bills. Any questions about?
Seeing none, we'll move on to mayor's order four.
Mayor's order four, order that the city council accept the donations in the amount of $6,976 to the Chicopee Senior Center. Said donations are for senior meals for the month of October 2025 and are accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Any questions about those donations to the senior center for the lunch program?
Seeing none, we'll move on to mayor's order five.
To the city council, you're hereby notified that I this day reappointed Amy Partlow of Chicopee to serve as a board member on the Council of Disability as of November 18th, 2025, to which appointment I ask the confirmation of your honorable counsel. I know you've all met Amy. She's doing a tremendous job working on the Commission of Disability, and she's looking to serve another term. Amy's not here tonight, but if you're watching, I just want to say thank you for generously donating your time to the commission.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to mayor's order six.
Mayor's order six to the city council, you are hereby notified that I have this day appointed Anna Maria Hamblin of Chicopee to serve as a board member on the City Hall Building Commission Phase Two as of November 18th, 2025, to which appointment I ask the confirmation of your honorable counsel. Anna Maria is here. Anna is graciously volunteering her time. We've had two resignations from the City Hall Phase Two Commissions, one because someone moved out of town and one because they had lost some interest in serving. And I have two new appointments tonight for your consideration, and one of them is Anna Maria Hamblin. So thank you, Anna, for your generosity with your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to mayor's order seven.
To the city council, you're hereby notified that I have this day appointed Rajesh Sangui of Chicopee to serve as a board member on the City Hall Building Commission Phase Two as of November 18th, 2025, to which appointment I ask for the confirmation of your honorable counsel. You all know Raj. Raj is here, and Raj, I want to say thank you for your willingness to, with your generous generosity of your time as well. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, we'll move on to mayor's order eight.
Mayor's order eight, be it ordered that the city council, according to the powers granted to it by the city charter and Chapters 79, 83, and 40, and 14 of the Massachusetts general laws, that the city hereby take permanent land-taking, permanent easement, and temporary easement interests in two parcels of land near McKenstry Avenue by eminent domain. Said parcels are further described and identified along with parties entitled to damages. There are no betterment assessed by the takings. So these go hand in hand. This is eight and nine. One is the takings for the, actually, it's the total taking for that property located. I know that our superintendent of DPW is here, and it is that corner house address on McKenstry. It's in your background information. Liz, do you have that address?
I do. I'm sorry, I do not have the address with me, but it's the White House across from the Big Y Gas Station on the corner of Granby Road and McKenstry. So this taking would enable us, give us the area needed for the Roundabout Project. This is the first taking of a few takings. This is the first major taking since we have to assist with a relocation of the property owner. It requires 120 days, so this is why this one is coming in separately.
Yes, this is going to start the relocation process through, with, we're actually being assisted through the state mass DOT in that process as well, through the right-of-way bureau.
Yes, through the chair of the mayor, is this land-taking, there's two numbers on here, $280,000 and a $13,700 or whatever. Why is it broken down into two? Is one for relocation, Liz?
Um, yes. So there's the property value and then costs associated with the relocation.
Okay, because they called me a couple of days ago, and he's 90 years old, so he's, I don't know if he's agreed to get out or if he is gonna, you know, stay there.
I believe he has agreed. We did have to, part of DOT, we were required to hire a relocation consultant, and so they are working with him and probably whoever is in charge of his estate.
Two nephews, yeah.
So just for clarity, is it's 985 McKenstry Avenue? You have that in your background information?
Yeah. They called me yesterday to ask me, because they caught wind that there was a
985.
$13,000.
Yeah.
And they wanted to know what that was, so relocation help. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one? Seeing none, going mayor's order nine, if you would have just given
Thank you, Superintendent. So eight and nine go together. Now, that would be the appropriation of the $293,700 to the filing-named account, DPW Highway Special Account for Land Takings from the Available Funds in the Stabilization Fund. So that would be funding the authorization to take by eminent domain.
Seeing none. Counsel, mayor, you have the floor for, you have any remarks?
Yes, first and foremost, I want to wish the viewing audience and everyone who's here and my colleagues here on the city council and school committee a happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving, and I hope to see you all at the sword game. We'll be playing Chicopee High, Chicopee Comp will be playing at Zot Park at 10:00 a.m. on Thanksgiving morning, and it is the season for giving. I just wanted to share a couple of other quick thoughts, that the governor was here yesterday, visited the Food Bank of Western Mass, and really emphasized how important it is that, you know, those who are receiving their SNAP benefits continue to receive them, especially our older adults and families who are counting on that to feed their, to feed themselves, which is kind of a scary thing, and that there's no way that you could take away SNAP benefits and expect our local pantries in our Food Bank of Western Mass to actually supplant or make up that difference. It's just impossible. That burden and that anxiety that it created was just unnecessary and a little scary. And really grateful how everyone stepped up during that time of need and really thankful that those benefits have been reestablished, especially for our older adults and families and those who are in need in transition. Also had the Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities. Ed Augustus was in Chicopee yesterday. He toured the Chicopee Housing Authority. The honor and privilege of joining him on that tour, saw one of the units. You saw the article in the paper today. There are some vacancies, but unfortunately, a very large waiting list. And I can tell you that the administration is really focused on housing. And we also had the opportunity to show him exactly where we're at, at a snapshot of what Uniroil looks like, and that was pretty exciting for him to see the potential of that space in conversion of a dilapidated industrial shell, two shells, turning them into market-rate housing is the proposal. And certainly, he was intrigued by that and on board with, hopefully try to find creative ways of helping us move that project forward. So two exciting things happened yesterday I want to share with you, and again, happy Thanksgiving to you and your families. Thank you for, and thank you for your consideration to the mayor's orders.
Thank you. We will now move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. Is there anyone in the audience here for public input? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Is there anyone on Zoom for public input? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close public input.
Motion to close public input.
Motion made in second to close public input. Roll call. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and a motion passes. Mayor's orders. I'm sorry, communications first?
No communications.
Minutes.
We have two sets, October 7th and October 21st.
Counsel Shumsky.
Motion that the minutes of October 7th, 2025, and October 21st, 2025 be approved this evening.
Motion made in second that we accept the minutes of October 7th, 2025, and the regular minutes of October 21st, 2025. On the motion?
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and a motion passes. Mayor's orders.
Order that the city council accept the FY 2026 Edward Bryan's Memorial Justice Assistant Grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to the Chicopee Police Department in the amount of $18,238. Said grant will be used to purchase Glock 45T MOS training pistols and weapon-mounted lights. The grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Ariah.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is a grant that would allow them to purchase 24 training pistols with blank rounds that mimic the real rounds and also the mounted lights, so it mimics the real firearms. So I think it's a great way to get through training, and I think this is a wonderful grant, and I'm excited to see this.
Thank you. Any other comments from the, Counsel Kushein?
I'm very happy to see this. Many, many decades ago, there was a training incident because there was use of SIMs and live ammunition, when an officer was shot in the head, unfortunately, and that ended his very good career. He was an awesome guy. So to finally get away from using anything but simunitions, it's phenomenal.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello? Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $12,979.87 be hereby appropriated to the following-named account, police expense account for weaponry equipment. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Counsel Costello.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
Yes, on the motion, Chief Major is requesting the approp, is requesting an appropriation in the amount to be deposited into the weaponry, weaponry, excuse me, weaponry equipment account. This appropriation combined with the existing balance in the account will cover the purchase of the grant-approved equipment, and the amount again is $12,979.87.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the sum of $17,557.58 be hereby appropriated to the following-named account, human resource special account for indemnifications of police and fire. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Counsel Crapitz.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second, that the motion be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
Uh, our police and fire departments are self-insured, so this is to cover folks that are out on medical leave.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Order that the city council accept the donations in the amount of $6,976 to the Chicopee Senior Center. Said donations are for senior meals for the month of October and are accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Roy.
Yeah, motion that the mayor's order be received, the donations accepted this evening.
Motion made in second, the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation and a donation accepted this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, the council on aging informed us that in the month of October, the Chicopee Council on Aging received donations from daily meals from seniors in the amount of $6,976. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
To the reappointment of Amy Partlow as a member of the Council on Disability.
Counsel Labree.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor and the reappointment be passed this evening.
Motion made in second, the motion received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor and the reappointment approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, she's going for another term, and we thank her for her service.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call. All, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and a motion passes.
Of the appointment of Anna Maria Hamblin as a member of the City Hall Building Commission Phase Two.
Counsel Balak here.
A motion that the mayor's order be received, passed through all stages on recommendation of the mayor, and that the appointment be referred to the Human Resource Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second, so this, okay, motion made in second that the order be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor and sent to the Human Resource Subcommittee for a public hearing.
Could I speak?
Can't have it both ways.
What?
Can't have it approved, because then you're indicating
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Want it to go in the affirmative?
On the motion, yeah.
And then refer it to committee.
On the motion, this is, Anna Marie Hamblin is planning on serving on the board for the City Hall Building Commission Phase Two. And
Then another commission.
Yeah.
Right.
He did.
That's, that's what I said initially.
He did.
No, 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 no.
So.
Because it's a new appointment.
It doesn't.
That's up, that'd be up to you guys, I guess.
On the motion.
Okay, so on the motion, we do know Anna Marie Hamblin, and she's interested in serving on the board for the City Hall Building Commission, but this is a new appointment, so the question would be whether or not, because of her past experience, if we wanted to waive that, or if because it's a new appointment, she has to go through the vetting process. So I'm not sure, Mr. President, which way you want to go.
Counsel Labree.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend Rule 37 and pass this this evening. I think she's known to us all, and she serves on another committee in the city, you know, so she's already been through the Human Resource Committee.
Motion made in second, we suspend Rule 37 for this appointment this evening. Roll call vote.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion. On the motion.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve it this evening.
Okay, so you want me to amend the motion?
Right.
Just, just make the motion that the appointment be approved this evening.
Motion made in second that the appointment be approved this evening. I'll say. Roll call vote.
Okay.
Okay. President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Eleven, yes.
And a motion passes.
Of the new appointment of Rajesh Shangvi as a member of the City Hall Building Commission Phase Two.
Counsel Shumsky.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and sent to Human Resources for a public hearing.
Motion made in second, the order be received and sent to the Human Resource Subcommittee for a public hearing. On the motion.
This is for a new appointment of Raj Shangwe of 38 Wheatlands who serve on the City Hall, Phase Two Building Commission.
Thank you. Counsel Labree.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend Rule 37, uh...
Motion made in second that we suspend Rule 37, uh, for this appointment. On the motion.
On the motion, uh, he, uh, Mr. Sevigny serves on the, uh, Planning Board and he's already been, uh, interviewed, uh, by the Human Resource Committee, um, the same as the former applicant.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Uh, Counsel Schumsky, you want to make a motion to approve-
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the new appointment of Raj Shangwe, uh, for the City Hall Building Commission.
No, you got to suspend.
You got a sec?
Oh, I did.
No, we suspended the rule, so I just have to make a motion to approve.
Roll call on it.
So on the suspension of the rule, President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Now it's-
Eleven yes. Now you can make the appointment.
Motion to appoint Raj to San Wui to the City Hall, Phase Two Building Commission.
Motion made in second that the, uh, the appointment be approved this evening. On the motion, please.
Self-explanatory.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, we better re-
Let's do a voice. President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Uh, yeah.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yeah.
Kushein?
Sure.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Be it ordered by the city council, acting accordingly to powers granted to it by the chap, by the charter and Chapter 79 and 83 and 40, Section 14 of the Massachusetts General Law, that the city hereby takes permanent land taking, permanent easement, and temporary easement in interest of two parcels in, of land near McKen- McKenstry Avenue by eminent domain. Said parcels are further described and identified along with parties entitled to damages in Exhibit A attached to this order. There are no betterment assessed by this taking.
Counsel Kushein.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second that the order be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is the first of several, uh, land takings for the Roundabout Project.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Costello.
Yeah, this is a, and I appreciate, uh, Mr. Kushein's, uh, motion. This is a big deal because this is the first step, as he noted, in the roundabout process on that Montgomery Street, Granby Road area. Um, so, um, thank you, Counsel Kushein, to, uh, let us know that. So this is the very first step in that major project of the Roundabout. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Or that the sum of $293,700 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, DPW Highway Special Account for Land Taken. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the Stabilization Fund.
Counsel Goff.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
Uh, this is the second part of the land-taking for the Roundabout Project.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Costello.
Yeah, just note in regard to the superintendent's, uh, memo, please note that this is the first of two order of land-taking that must be approved for the Roundabout Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Crapitz?
Yes.
Schumsky?
Yes.
Kushein?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Pinia Costello?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And a motion passes.
Have a favorable report from the Finance Committee be it ordered that the mayor is hereby authorized to acquire 219 and 225 Exchange Street in Chicagabe in accordance with the City Charter, Section 14, Chapter 40 of the Massachusetts General Law, for the purpose of relocating the Chicagabe School Department Administrative Offices. Be further ordered, the mayor is authorized to negotiate favorable terms for the city and execute any formality or documents necessary to facilitate this purchase.
Counsel Crapitz.
Motion that the, uh, Finance Committee report be received and placed on file.
Motion made in second that the favorable Finance Committee report be received and placed on file.
I'm sorry, that it, uh, that the mayor be allowed to negotiate on behalf of the city.
Right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Right, okay, okay. A favorable finance report giving the mayor permission to negotiate of, of 219 and 225 Exchange Street. On the motion, please.
Uh, yeah, we had a tour of the, uh, facility and, um, so after touring it, it was, uh, decided by the, uh, Finance Committee that, uh, to allow the mayor to go forward and, uh, pursue negotiations with it possibly being the future, um, school committee building.
Thank you. Any other-
Building.
Counsel Brooks, what's next, and then you?
Thank you, and I did get to view the building as a member of the Finance Committee as well as there were some other, uh, members of the General Counsel present. I think this is a boon for the downtown and, uh, I think there's a, an inherent benefit to Ward's Two, Three, and Four. Um, if you look at where this building is located, the old Balakir's Williamson Clothere, uh, things that I can't remember were there before, um, you're going to see that the crossroads of Four, Three, and Two will benefit from the economic impact of having what was reported to us of 90 full-time positions that will be located in that area. Um, so you'll see the downtown restaurants benefit, you'll see the restaurants on the Meadow Street Corridor benefit, you'll see the businesses in Ward Four up the Springfield Street Corridor benefit. So, aside from all the talk about revitalization of downtown, this just makes sense. It's on a public transit line, and we know that the median income of many of our families is below the poverty line and they don't have the luxury of owning a vehicle. So if they were in need of going to, as it currently stands now, Doolong Circle, that presents a hardship. But with bus stops directly adjacent to that location, this will further enhance the school department's relationship with the general public and the students in which they serve. So there are a multitude of benefits, um, that either were deliberately thought about or it were just the benefit of where this is located. So I'm, you know, I'm anxious and excited to see this potentially come to fruition. Uh, in hearing what the broker from the seller did say, I think they're anxious to get out from under it. I think, uh, it is excess, uh, property that they are now maintaining and they would be very happy to partner with the, uh, city to see the school department end up there. And representatives from the school department, most importantly, Dr. Ware, made it abundantly clear that that would work for his needs. Um, and then we were assured that the move could occur in a timely fashion to provide minimal disruption to the services that currently, uh, Doolong Circle provides to the residents and our students. Thank you.
Counsel Balakir.
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. President. As my counselor, uh, colleague to my right, so eloquently stated, uh, there's a lot of pluses with this building. This was a building I believe that my uncle had built in 1955, somewhere around there. So, uh, this was a business, uh, building that we had for, uh, many years and then it was acquired by Chicagabe Savings Bank and, uh, Westfield. And, uh, I also was on the tour and, uh, I think the building is, it's going to be a great, great fix and a great find for downtown and it's really going to help the city out. And I know there was an appraisal of 2.36 million on this building, so I'm, I'm not sure finally what the negotiated price is going to be. And, um, there are a lot of fixtures and furniture in there that we could utilize. It's just a question if we have a meeting of the minds if that's factored into the negotiated price, uh, with Westfield and the city. But, uh, this, uh, this really helped the city tremendously and, and helped our needs. So I'm, I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Counsel Labree.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, when I was a younger, uh, child, I went, I went to Balakir's quite often and, um, also, as I got older, uh, we were at Hastings almost every day picking up something. So all of those buildings together, uh, it's a massive amount of space. They've all been rehabbed. Um, the furniture is there to fit, so I hope we can work out a deal, uh, to keep some of that furniture. And I know Westfield Savings has been a great partner for the city of Chicagabe. They donate, you know, numerous times a year to numerous events. But there's one thing we, we didn't talk about that night. I just want to bring it up and, uh, Counsel Balakir might shed some light on it. But I remember going down into the cellar and I believe the shoes were sold in the cellar. And I can remember quite a large cellar down there. And, uh, we did not talk about that and I think that's only added, you know, it's not counted as the square footage as the, um, uh, uh, you know, that was stated that night. But I think the cellar adds storage and, and, and I know the school committee can use, the su, the school department can use storage.
Correct.
And, um, it's just, I want to bring that up.
Counsel Ariaga.
Um, I just want to say too, I believe the building we're in now we're renting, so this would be owned, so in the long run, we'd be saving money, um, by not renting a building. And, and I definitely want to, um, I thank everybody for the tour. It was a wonderful facility. I really do like the building. I think it's a great move for the school department, as been echoed a few times. It is on the bus route, which I think is very, very, very important for our residents here in the city, um, for our parents. And I think it's great to have it next to City Hall to, um, just kind of be able to have everything in one place and make it easier on our families that may not, you know, be able to get off of work and need to do everything in one day. So it just makes everything a lot easier to, to get those errands done. Um, and I think it'll be fantastic. And, and as said too, Dr. Ware has definitely said this is, uh, a good fit for him and the school department. So, uh, I'm happy to see this come, uh, to fruition and, and like I said, I've got to see the building too. And, and it's definitely amazing and, and I really hope that we, that we move in and, and see it come to light.
Counsel Costello.
Thanks. I want to thank the mayor and his team, um, for finding this building because the buildings that they were in were not great. Um, Doolong was way out, not on a bus route. And the one I think, um, Counsel Brooks probably remembers, the one building at 180 Broadway was a hundred and something years old. So this is a major improvement for the school department. It's a good investment for the city and you're going to create a government center where you have City Hall and a school department administration building near each other. So thanks again.
Counsel Schumsky.
Yeah, no, I also want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and give my gratitude to the mayor, his administration, and everyone who has, um, been a part of this. I think it's going to be a great benefit, not only to downtown Chicagabe, but for everyone who works at Doolong or hopefully will be school department headquarters down on Exchange Street. And this is a much better price and, in my opinion, building than the complex, the mega complex they wanted to try and purchase three years ago now for $8 million. It was 80,000 square feet. It was ridiculous. This is a much better fit for not only the taxpayers, but for our employees and every resident who has a child in the school system. So I'm hopeful that this will pass tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir? Falkeer.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Schumsky.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
LeBrie.
Yes.
Piniak Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
And the motion passes.
Be ordered that the Recreation Committee meet for a public hearing with an update on the ongoing maintenance and improvements at Preston Park.
Counsel Kuchain.
That's not mine.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Costello, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a motion to refer to the Recreation Committee, just an update on Preston Park.
Motion made in second that the order be received and sent to the Recreation Committee for a public hearing.
And I, I'm sorry, and I know that Counsel Kuchain is having a meeting, so I just figured that we could add this in just for a further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
Be ordered that the Recreation Subcommittee meet with the Parks and Recreation Superintendent and the Golf Course Manager for an end-of-year update on current projects and future endeavors.
Counsel Kuchain.
Motion that the order be received and sent to the Parks and Rec Subcommittee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second, the order be received and sent to the Recreation Subcommittee for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, it's just a small typo. The word "on" is actually supposed to be a comma. So it's three subjects: end of year, current projects, and future endeavors.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the reply to me from the office got snagged by quarantine, so I couldn't respond with noticing the error there. So, we're here today, and we'll make sure Preston Park's part of the update.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
We have an ordinance to strike from the following and schedule, parking prohibited here at a corner, Beverly Street.
Counsel Goff.
Motion that the order be received and referred to the Ordinance Committee for a first reading and public hearing.
Motion made in second, the order be received and sent to the Ordinance Committee for a first reading and a public hearing. On the motion, please.
Discussing Committee.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
Okay, 14 through 16 are 2026 Class 1 license renewals, Curry Automotive LLC, Metro Motors of Chicagabe, Inc., Rally Automotive LLC doing business as Curry Nissan Chicagabe.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2026 Class 1 license renewals be received and approved this evening with existing restrictions.
Motion made in second, the 2026 Class 1 license renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concern? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
17 through 27 are 2026 Class 2 license renewals. Allstate Auto Max LLC doing business as Best Car Deals, Auto Techniques, Inc., Chuck's Auto Sales, LLC, Fairview Auto Salvage, Gilbert's Auto Care, Inc., Kins Auto Sales, Matt's Auto Mall, LLC, Reliable Auto Sales, Tellier's Auto Sales, Inc., doing business as Tellier's Auto Body, Unique Auto, Inc., and Unique Motors, Inc.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2026 Class 2 license renewals be received and approved this evening with existing restrictions.
Motion made in second, the 2026 Class 2 license renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns, anybody? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
2026 Class 3 license renewal, Fairview Auto Salvage, Inc.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that 2026 Class 3 license renewal be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made in second, the 2026 Class 3 license renewal be approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
29 and 30 are 2026 auto body auto repair renewals, Curry Automotive LLC doing business as Curry Honda, Unique Motors, Inc.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that 2026 auto body auto repair renewal licenses be received this evening and approved with current restrictions.
Motion made in second, the 2026 auto body auto repair renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion, please.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
Okay, 2026 auto body license renewal, Stans Auto Body and Glass, Inc., Tellier's Auto Body, Inc.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that 2026 auto body license renewals be received and approved this evening with restrictions.
Motion made in second, the 2026 auto body license renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion, please.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
2026 auto repair license renewals, Allstate Auto Max LLC doing business as Best Car Deal, Best Deals, Auto Techniques, Inc., Center Auto Repair, LLC, Don's Auto Repair, Gilbert Auto Care, Inc., Kins Auto Glass, Kins Auto Repair 2, Lloyd's Transmission, Inc., Metro Motors of Chicagabe, Inc., Metro Lube Enterprises doing business as Valvoline Instant Oil Change, Myers Service Station, Rally Automotive, LLC doing business as Curry Nissan Chicagabe, Reliable Auto Sales.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that 2026 auto repair license renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made in second, the 2026 auto repair license renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? All in favor? Opposed, and the motion passes.
46 through 48, 2026 auto detail license renewals, Allstate Auto Max LLC doing business as Best Car, Best Deals, Center Auto Repair, LLC, Metro Motors of Chicagabe, Inc.
Counsel Brooks.
Make a motion that the 2026 auto detail license renewals be received and approved this evening with current restrictions.
Motion made in second, the 2026 auto detail license renewals be approved this evening with the restrictions. On the motion.
Unless there's any concerns.
Any concerns from the floor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes. Counselors' announcements. We'll start with Ariaga.
I just want to start with saying Happy Thanksgiving to all of you, all my colleagues. I hope you enjoy time with your family. To the residents, I, I really do hope that you enjoy some warm moments with your family. It's very cold out. And then also, as the mayor had spoken earlier, the governor was here yesterday. I was able to attend. But there are a lot of food insecurities, and I hope that not just this time of year, but all year that you donate your time. And if you have a little extra to give, to please do so. Our food banks work very, very hard to make sure that our residents are fed. And I just hope to see everybody kind of give back where they can in the community. Thank you.
Counsel Costello.
I want to wish everybody on our board a Happy Thanksgiving, and also to our family and friends. And I want you to know, Counsel Ariaga and Counsel Crumpets knows this, I was the governor for the day yesterday.
Congratulations. Counsel Crumpets.
I just want to wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving, and to the council, and to relatives and friends and residents as well. Being at that ceremony yesterday with the governor, and hearing the different folks speaking from the different food pantries, kind of really hit home about the dire need that many people are in for, for needing food. So, and as was mentioned, it's not just this time of year. You should be thinking about it all through the year. But, you know, take a moment to think of folks that are, you know, not as fortunate as you may be. Thank you.
Counsel Roy.
Yeah, I want to wish the council, their families, and everyone out there a Happy Thanksgiving, healthy Thanksgiving. And on behalf of Counsel Zigorowski, if you see something, say something. And this is your city, take pride in it. Thank you.
Counsel LeBrie.
Yes, I also would like to wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving. And the next time we have a meeting in December, maybe we'll see some snow on the ground, so.
Thank you. Counsel Balak here.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I also want to wish my colleagues and constituents a happy, healthy Thanksgiving, and also think of those that are less fortunate during Thanksgiving. And today is the two-year anniversary of Jim Tillison's passing, so let's hope that he continues to send wisdom down from heaven. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Schumsky.
I, too, also want to wish everyone a Happy Thanksgiving, to my colleagues and your families, to my residents, and to everyone who watches these. Happy Thanksgiving to you. It's a wonderful time of the year. That brings, starts the holiday season, and everyone gets a little more joyful, and hopefully everyone is like, remains like that for the rest of the year. I also want to say, it's a big day next week. I turn a quarter of a century old. I don't know what kind of wisdom that'll bring me and to you guys, but I know I'll finally be old enough to rent the car, so. So, yeah, happy, Happy Thanksgiving.
Can't help your golf game. You did buy me dinner last time.
Have to buy you a razor. Counsel Kuchain.